And call this meeting to order.
Brooks.
Here.
Jacobs.
Here.
Holmberg.
Here.
Allen.
Here.
Lund.
Here.
Everybody get a chance to look at the minutes from last meeting?
Move to approve.
Brooks.
Here.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Holmberg.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Lund.
Yes. And do you want to make a motion to adopt the agenda for tonight?
Move to adopt. Brooks.
Yes, sir.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Holmberg.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Lund.
Yes.
All right, first up, we have a Thursday proclamation that we're going to read, followed by a briefing from the Energy and Sustainability Task Force. So, anyone that is interested in joining us for the reading of the proclamation, so Mark and Phil, I think both of you guys got the shirts? And anybody from Energy and Sustainability Task Force wants to come forward and be a part of this? We'd love to have it. So, here we go. Whereas sound natural environment is the foundation of a healthy society and a robust economy. And whereas human activities around rural are causing severe environmental damage, threats to human health and our sustainability, to sustain the diverse community of life. The knowledge of ways to live in a modern day environment, and that is the technologies that are powerful, which already exist. And whereas local communities contribute much to the diverse environment education, they contribute to building a healthy society by addressing issues such as energy use, transportation, waste refineries, and other environmental concerns. There are sound, even environmental and social practices for local governments to initiate energy efficiency and renewable energy practices. And whereas environmental reality of our time require humans to make dramatic shift in our relationship with the earth. Therefore, let it be known, the city of Warrensburg recognizes April 22nd, 2019, as its Earth Day, and commits itself in undertaking programs and projects that enhance our community's natural environment, and furthermore, especially to others in the community who can contribute in various ways to help better our environment. A few of those are White Moon Air Force Base, University Systems Delivery, Warrensburg District, Citizens for Environmental Action, and the Energy and Sustainability Task Force. They date as 26th day of April 2019 in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri.
Report. Our first report. The city council from the Energy and Sustainability Task Force in your should be your actual honorable lead person. And I want to make a few comments about it. Three different paragraphs, but actually, first, I'd like to thank Cindy for writing that proclamation. Basically, just tell Cindy that if you want a proclamation, she'll do it. If you listen to it carefully, I was just really impressed by her choice of words and his personal paragraphs. And so, I'm very glad that she was able to do that and talk about our environmental realities and our time and need for community, local community action. So, that's how the task force got started about a year ago. We've been meeting every month, and Warrensburg City Council is going to report once a year. Also, I want to thank the city, all of city council members. We have very active city council members on the task force. We always have someone, or say, a city employee come to our task force. One meeting, I think we had four city employees come, and there's some partners, people in control. The working, you know, we tried to do what's in the first paragraph. We tried to bring a solar project to the city. And I guess that is the first item. Though we have been successful, I think we've learned a few things along the way. And during the process, the city through your powers reached out the fight, and we now have another good contacts that are willing to help us as we move forward. But we strong here at the city to continue working at this and see if we can come up with a way to get some solar or renewable energy here. Second paragraph is something that needs to happen if we're going to set some goals as a city in energy reduction, energy use reduction, efficiency. We need to know where we are. And that's talking about a baseline, how much energy does the city use? And next year, we're going to use less. So, we need a baseline. And it's not necessarily going to be an easy thing to do, but that's the only way we can move forward. And I hope that the city can challenge our community to look at some energy efficiencies so that we can kind of work this as an entire community. And the last paragraph is pretty short, but I think it's very important. And that is, how are my ideas about energy efficiency and sustainability going to be brought to fruition? How is that going to work within our city framework? So, how can we move here and make something happen? For our size of city, for our type of government, and the structure within the city? So, well, that, you know, when that happens, then ideas can be fed in and brought to fruition. So, they are, you know, there's only three things there, but I think they're big things that you need to start. So, if you have any questions, I would answer them. We have, I think we have five task force members here that certainly knew as well as I can towards answering questions.
Phil, thank you for kind of you and Steve spearheading, getting this off the ground and putting in the heavy work along with Steve and Bob and Lyle. Thank you for your efforts bringing this forward. We've been doing a lot of behind the scenes work and talks, and some of it was necessary to keep quiet, and some of it we want to tap. And so, it's been a lot of work and a lot of thought gone into this, and still a lot of work to do. But thank you for the work and the effort that you do, and you and Mark, as well as CEA, to bring this issue to the front of what we're trying to do. So, I very much enjoyed working with you guys over the last year.
Thank you.
All right, first and second reading ordinance. We have Magnolia Garden Walk pledge agreement.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor of the City Council, Garden Walk in Warrensburg is getting ready to develop an area of the new Thompson Street and Cooper Boulevard. As of planned, the area, Cooper Extension is showing on the plan, but the developer may require to build it at this time. Staff has asked that the developer construct that because at the time, if it's put in now, the street is constructed in the wrong location, it'd be a waste of that cost to construct a sidewalk. We've asked them to give $25,000 to cover the cost of that sidewalk being put in place when that street is extended. So, what you have for you is the agreement between the city and the developer. Give cash escrow. And then... This is pretty much the same deal we put the gun in for Chipotle when they built Chipolins too.
Yes, sir.
A couple of times on the run wire.
Okay.
Businesses need to do that and fill out a balance between requiring a sidewalk to a way, not a required to a way. We have one in the area, so we need to do that project. We need to do that, no waste of something like putting a sidewalk public to our future in the project.
Move to said bill going to second reading by title.
We need to read that.
All right. So, here is the whole ordinance. An ordinance authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute a public improvement pledge agreement concerning rural housing of Warrensburg LP Garden Walk in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri.
Move to said bill being moved to second reading by title.
Brooks.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Holmberg.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Lund.
Yes.
This is an ordinance authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute a public improvement pledge agreement concerning rural housing of Warrensburg LP Garden Walk in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri. This is for adoption or rejection. Brooks.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Holmberg.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Lund.
Yes.
All right, next we'll move to street maintenance overlay contract agreement. An ordinance authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute a contract with Emory Sapp and Sons Incorporated for the 2019 Street Maintenance Program, Hot Mix Overlay in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri.
Mr. Mayor, City Council staff solicited for bids for summer street maintenance overlay program, and open bids on April the 8th. Five bids were received, three were determined to be almost possible because of deletions in the requirements middle. I came out with two final bids, and the best bid that we had, the best price was from Eric Sapp and Sons. They qualified, they had $14,000, or $416,026.67. Staff that asked the city council approved bid as submitted.
Can we get you a look at it? Any questions?
Second bill will be passed second read by title. Brooks.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Holmberg.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Lund.
Yes.
This is an ordinance authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute a contract with Emory Sapp and Sons Incorporated for the 2019 Street Maintenance Program, Hot Mix Overlay in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri. This is for adoption or rejection. Brooks.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Holmberg.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Lund.
Yes. Next we'll move to other business. The first item on the docket was discussion of downtown trees. It was going to be Randy Schur presenting about that. Unfortunately, Randy called me late afternoon today, and due to a family or a friend passing away, he is in northern Missouri and unable to make it tonight. He expresses his regrets for not being able to be here. So, at this point, we can give a brief overview of what we've kind of discussed, but we don't want to get too deep because if Randy still wants to come next meeting, we would definitely invite that opportunity. Randy is basically, in this case, serving as a downtown business owner and a concerned citizen, has been very engaged throughout the years in Warrensburg and noticed some trees downtown have not been replaced, specifically on Pine Street. And he noticed the city workers were filling in inside the metal grate, you know, the concrete's hole is about this big, and there's a metal grate with a hole for the, just the trunk of the tree to go around. It was creating a tripping hazard. And finally warmed up after our brutal winter, and city staff was out there filling in the holes with concrete, just that center hole. Just a temporary fix, could be hammered out and removed, but Randy was very concerned when he saw the concrete going in, that that was going to be a permanent deal, and has since spurred a discussion among the city downtown business owners, main street city staff, to start a dialogue on how we can better manage the downtown trees in Warrensburg. The city was struggling with several of the trees being broken, specifically on Pine Street, and would replace them only for it to be broken, and saw it as a sunk cost to kind of keep doing that over and over. And so, they're looking for a more long-term, sustainable solution to that. And there's been lots of ideas brought to the table, and a coalition is building kind of from Randy's passion for what he saw downtown. And so, we'll leave it to Randy to decide if he wants to come forward next meeting to tell us more in detail. But he basically has expressed his displeasure and wants to see us make sure that we still have it a priority to create a beautiful and inviting downtown area, which I think everybody is all for. We just want to go about it in a more responsible fashion and take our time to choose the right species of tree, and where does the trees go, and how do we protect it in a better way, and how do we make sure that we're trimming them as they should? So, if we get another winter like we've had this year, where it really created a huge strain with the weight of the wet snow on it, how can we be better prepared and learn from what are our past mistakes and what we've observed over the past to not do that again and make it better for the future of Warrensburg? So, that's kind of the broad synopsis, and the coalition has met several times involving experts from Missouri Department of Natural Resources, and we will continue to do so. We invite you back next time, and hopefully we'll discuss that in further detail. Second on other business is Rose Garden Concrete Replacement Discussion.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, after our last meeting, as you remember, that meeting too happened, for the same, the community Rose Garden group came in and requested $1,200 to match their $1,000 grant they had for a $2,200 project there to Rose Garden replace sidewalk. At that time, it was felt that due to some kind of mapping, that portion that they were requesting that work to be done in was not in the city right of way, so did not fall under the ability of our current sidewalk program to be, those funds to be used for such. Following that meeting, I went back and looked at some additional information, which turned out to be the 1964 construction plans for Gate Street, Berman, and that area. With those plans, which were certified by survey, it was determined that the ground does in fact exist in city right of way. Therefore, we will be placing the $1,200 request from the community of Rose Garden in the current sidewalk program this year, so no further action needs to be taken by city council for this project.
That's pretty neat.
That's, I'm glad you're able to go back and find another plan that showed it wasn't the right way, so we could help them out. Thanks for doing that extra work.
Thank you.
All right, third item under other business is the fiscal year 2019 revenue outlook and fiscal year 20 forecast.
Mayor, City Council, what we have for you today, we're going to go over the... So, we have, what we'll go over is historical revenue trends, current revenue, FY '20 year-end estimates, I mean FY '19 year-end estimates, the 20 review revenue projections, and then the CIP outlook for '19 and '20. So, historically, our curve is pretty steady, we're on a sort of an incline on the curve. We have had two years that were outliers. That was 2015, which we had a large settlement from Century Link, which kind of threw off those numbers for the franchise tax, and which made the revenue higher than it should have been. And then again, 2017, where we had lease proceeds that we received from the fire truck purchase and for the PDRMS system. So, our current revenue situation, our year-to-date tax revenue is down about 2.4%. Actual revenue numbers are down compared to the FY '19 budgeted numbers as well, about 5%, with sales tax being down 3.6% and franchise being down 3.2%. Some of the factors that contributed to those down numbers were franchise rebates that were given to electric customers this year. We saw it about a hundred, around $100,000 led, so that reduced our franchise taxes. And then speaking with other finance directors in the state, everybody seems to think that inclement weather has something to do with sales tax numbers coming in a little lower than projected. And then also, speaking with our auditors, they seem to think that the state may be holding money a little longer this time of year as well, especially with the timing of the reports coming out later than they once had before. So, taking a look at current revenue, at this time of year, we're usually about 60% of the city's revenue is received, but we're down about 55% right now. 98% of property tax is received at this time, and we're in part with that. Our other revenue is down, especially once you take into consideration that 10% of other revenue is interest. And so, you take $100,000 off of our other revenue, and you're down about $800,000. And we had 200 budgeted, I mean, 2 million budgeted for that. We'll be receiving 240,000 lease proceeds for the street sweeper that was budgeted in the budget for last year. That was a council decision. So, the fiscal year '19 year-end estimates, we, right now, we're projected to be about 1.9% under budget. These estimates will change in the upcoming months, depending on how revenues come in, if sales tax come in higher, or any of our other revenues come in higher or lower, they will kind of fluctuate within the next few months. Telephone and cable franchise taxes, they continue on a downward trend. We've been heading down with both of those franchise taxes since about 2015, and it's a steady decline in those numbers. So, looking at the 2020 revenue projections, we're looking at a sales tax increase of about 2.5%, and that's over this year's estimated numbers. So, that's the, what we've received already, plus what we're estimated to receive for the rest of the year. We're looking at about a 2.5% increase in those. And we're looking at about a 2% increase in electric, gas, water franchise, but it's trending that way for about, and that's average, some are higher. I think electric is a little higher, but water is a little lower, but the average is about 2% for those three. And then again, cable telephone, we're looking at a decrease of about 1% in revenue from those. I wanted to kind of show this with the 1% tax, sales tax comparison. We use a rolling 10-year average to kind of project those numbers. And so, this year, on our projection, we were really close on our numbers, with the exception of two months, which were October and then in April. But the other months, you have November through March, and we were off, I mean, $1,000 here, $5,000 there. We were really close on our numbers. So, that was something I did want to point out, that our projection model is working just when you have those last nine months. So, looking at the community investment plan outlook, our gas tax came in a little bit under budget. That's because I think we might have overshot the projection of the new truck stop and what that would do to our revenue numbers in that section. So, they'll come in a little short of what we thought. And then again, the interest on the CIP funds, we projected that we would have a higher beginning balance in both of those funds, so the interest was a little higher. Then, once the audit came through, we did all of our adjustments, the beginning balance in both of those funds were lower than projected, so that attributed to the lower interest payments. But overall, we're doing pretty well in the CIP fund. And is there any questions that some of you guys have?
I will validate, very nice charts and graphs. Not able to see it here, but if you download it, the packet posted on the website, very nice charts and graphs.
Thank you.
We can talk about it by several years apart, budgeting tours and processes today, but this is kind of a poor conversation because assuming council was comfortable with the projected 2020 numbers there, that is the number we're trying to balance expenses, or well, that is our balance to that, but that's the number we're using to... ...budgeting, helping with all the primary objectives of the city moving forward in the next year. So, this kind of sets up maybe that pie as people always start talking about how we cut that pie and dip it out. So, this is a poor conversation. I know we've been holding out, but the state legislature would offer some assistance in approving online sales tax. I sent an email to our state elected officials last week, expressing some concern on House Bill 548, which is the online sales tax bill that we're doing for the legislature right now. And unfortunately, it includes some language in there that does not allow cities to assess or receive any revenues from online sales taxes. And so, not only would it include us, including that also eliminates us being able to use our sales and use taxes, and I think it's one of the benefits we give to use taxes. Right now, we have some online businesses that are all terribly collecting and bidding those with the city. So, say for example, you buy something on Amazon right now, they will collect the city sales tax, and we'll get that. If this house goes to the floor, that would stop happening. So, again, just expressing the city staff's concern regarding some of the conversations these legislators have right now, and the impact it had on local governments, cities, and councils. They'll get their share, but it will...
Local businesses will, your local businesses will assess that sales tax. I mean, it's not a fair plan for you.
Yeah, it's actually worse than it is now, is what this is supposed to be.
And we'll all see though, with the revenue question that is done, we're looking at pretty much flat revenue from this year and next year. So, there's no, there's no revenue in there to help cover any increasing costs of operations for the city, or any services or position, or anything else that we need. So, it's, will be a pretty conservative budget proposal this year from staff with regards to anything significantly new, projects, or service advice.
Based off what I'm seeing here, month by month, it looks like your projection model is, is, is working well. So, I'm comfortable with the projector.
So, I did have a question. So, we're, I'm sorry, I saw somewhere is down, we're down 2.5% over for the year. So, is there any concerns that the city has about meeting its obligations with the lower, or are we good, since we have assets in reserve to cover any shortcuts? Did that make sense?
Uh, we, our revenue is down, but at the same time, our expenses are down right now too. Uh I don't I don't see us being in any position to financially where where we would be in trouble right now.
I don't know, let's see, for the most recent year, never actually fully expended the budgetary already given by council to staff. So we traditionally, we've got a one one thousand hundred expenses every year uh from what the council's proven. But so just because you give your authority to spend that much money, we don't always spend a lot of money because you give us authority to do that. So we pay attention to that a lot, that if revenues are down, we tell staff to be conservative. And if we give delays of expenses are going down, we'll do that. And then there's always a carryover of some projects that we hope will get done by the year, but during certain circumstances where we aren't able to get done, so those expenses don't come out of that specific year. Uh and we do have resources necessary to go into it. Nonetheless, it's a long way yet as far as uh you know, um if we're very low, we're going to dip into that much. But it's something that we try to hire or pay attention to, keep you in the public prize of how we're performing financially.
And then the on the lodging tax, that factor again, it increases to an half percent increase?
Uh for next year, twenty twenty, yes, and and for the estimates with the year-end estimates as well. So we had uh budgeted, I think it was a hundred and thirty-five thousand uh for fiscal year nineteen. It's looking like with the projections and the the increase, it'll be about a hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Does that happen?
Yeah, then next year, we're looking at.
Two eighty-three, I think.
Yes, two eighty-three uh next year, which is almost double what we got last year. It's a little conservative.
But that's that's also adding in the new hotel, assuming it's higher by twenty twenty.
But also bear in mind, that's a separate revenue file, so we don't use that to pay for fires or anything like that. It's directly to W C B B, so for our standpoint as a budget, it's an internet comes in, says whatever we want to pass on to W C B B, so we don't keep any of that money to uh balance uh budgeting services that we do on a day-to-day basis.
So if I'm reading this correctly, on your community investment plan outlook projections, so fiscal year two uh twenty, you're just about three hundred thousand less than what you're projecting the end of nineteen, correct?
Yes.
And so if we were able to convince legislatures on the sales tax, would that help bump that back up?
Not necessarily the C I P, because the C I P uh has its own funding mechanism, doesn't have said sales tax on that along with the gas tax. Uh if the gas tax goes through, yes, you might see some you would see some change in there, but uh you know, that's and and again, that that three hundred thousand dollars that we're we will be down in uh F Y twenty uh is basically uh grant money. So we we received approximately, we we received three hundred and thirty-seven thousand this year in grant money from the state, and that was for the uh the holding project that we did.
Okay. Thank you for clarification, man.
Any other discussion on budgets? Everybody feel good about the top line projected numbers so they can build a budget?
That's what it is.
All right, next item, other business, Midwest Pool Management Salary Increase Proposal.
Honorable mayor, members of the city council, um you may remember last November, the voters of Missouri voted uh to increase minimum wage to twelve dollars an hour by twenty twenty-three. This has had a significant impact on leveling our budget, but uh as contract out services, um it jumped, you know, seven five cents to slash year-on-year, eight five cents every year there after until twenty twenty-three. Um and we contracted our pool services with Midwest Pool Management, um also known as A P M. And um we redid that contract last January and we entered into the agreement with them in April. So our contract runs from April to March, is a three-year contract, um with an option for two additional year, one-year extensions. Uh so what you have is two charts, the first chart is the original bid proposal, uh and the second chart is the proposed increase, which takes account for the uh minimum wage increase. They have held the increase to about ten percent each year. Um although you can see by twenty twenty-one, we will have increased about twenty-one thousand dollars from the original proposed amount. Um so we would like to ask to approve the new proposal um with the increased wages.
So inside their contract, they have the ability to renegotiate that portion of the contract?
They have to give us their details, but we have to have it approved.
Any other questions? Do you need to do anything with this?
Yeah, council needs to approve the revenues of the park or for their uh for their contract. The parts department, any significant increase for contract or a specific amount requires council approval pro- council approval prior to the parks port taking the final action.
How did you do last year when you paid this part and then the revenue coming in, there was no break even point? Is the pool making any money or is this going to be?
That's part of our hesitation for budget, uh no, we're not going to be getting my assumption of debt payment, uh we're in the hole.
Are you having to stop doing other services or where's the money coming from? Because usually when wages go up, there's offsetting, how are you making up the difference?
So this year, we pay salaries in advance, um and then they always give us a refund at the end of the contract year. And that kind of gives us room for, so we are rental, they need to stack it extra, they could do so. And then um next April or March, they would give us refund. This year, we're going to get a little over forty-seven hundred dollars, so that'll help offset um the difference this year. Uh the next contract year is about ninety-five hundred dollars, so that'll help a little bit since the contract is off um from our fiscal year and I'll budget for that in the next budget. So I won't know the final impact of this budget until the end of the next contract year.
So it sounds like the old part, minimum wage goes up and the cost of services goes up, so your minimum wage raise absolutely positively, nothing in the grand scheme of things.
I will make a motion, sir.
Brooks?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Holberg?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Land?
Yes.
Appearances to the council not listed on the agenda?
No.
Uh next item is mayoral appointments. So I've been working through uh all of the current boards and I want to start with the uh liaisons to the parking reg board, W C B B, inclusion and diversity task force, planning and zoning traffic commission, energy and sustainability task force, because we all have one of us uh to serve on those. And so I would like to appoint to the parking reg board Nolan, W C B B Bryant, inclusion and diversity task force Nolan, planning and zoning Bryant, traffic commission Robin, energy and sustainability task force Scott. So let's go ahead and approve those if you guys.
I don't approve.
Brooks?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Holberg?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Land?
Yes.
You others on my list that may not involve any any changes. So economic coordinating board, I'm on that. Uh Western preparedance assistance league, uh I was informed that the mayor only attends that, so I will I will attend that quarterly meeting. Uh depot renovation board, uh is anybody interested in serving on the depot renovation board?
What does it mean?
It means quarterly, uh in the league afternoon, but I'm sure it's in the week, it's just a quarterly meeting.
You know what day it was, Bob?
Yes, it's uh I believe the uh second or third birthday at four P M back order.
We've got a lot of board and commissions, I think you keep flipping here.
Oh, they're not on.
Oh, you're not on?
They're on, yeah, because we don't, yeah, we just have one appointment.
So Will, if anybody has interest, uh please, please get with me, uh if you have interest in that. Um Main Street, Scott, you expressed some interest in that, are you still for that?
I am.
All right, I'd like to appoint Scott to the Main Street board, uh and then military affairs. I currently serve through the chamber, uh I'm going to be there already, so I'll just I'll just take that one uh as well. And then anybody want to dive on the depot renovation or we'll talk about it later?
I can, I can give it if nobody wants to do it, I don't think.
We'll talk about it and I'll start looking at some of these uh ones. All right, so let's put it, and uh so economic coordinating board Casey, W B R, Economic Development Corporation Casey, the Veterans Assistance League I have to as well, Main Street Scott, and then military affairs Casey. Would you like to make a motion? To approve it?
Brooks?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Holberg?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Land?
Yes.
Mislanious matters from the mayor and/or city councils. Anything else? City management report.
I'll keep it brief as uh we're just planning all day today, trying not to go that much later, all day tomorrow as well. So I'll keep it brief, but I just want to point out, the city manager report, there is a number prepared by Chief Cushing regarding the license renewal, if council would call the change process on us last year, trying to move the inspections up into January or February when it's a little slower, we have a lot of, we have more access to staff resources, we're doing inspections and those types of things. And you'll see in there only fifteen of forty-seven license businesses advantage of that. And as I think it was sixteen, with the new policy, uh those inspections, uh you two hundred and forty-nine dollars for inspection. And then if uh if they're lying in a medical inspections, uh staff will cease sale, alcohol sale of those establishments if they remember needing their license. So again, just giving a friendly, hopefully a reminder to those other forty-seven license businesses that have not renewed yet, that they want to get their inspections done. And it's getting more and more difficult with everything staff has going on to have the time available to do that. And now that I do, I'm going to get a lot of fees as well. I don't have any other options for those situations.
Matt, do you have anything else? Or is your finance report?
I did want to mention uh that uh I don't need that, I didn't receive uh finance and numbers and all that uh today. So I will share a lot of which uh in the last meeting. And not to this, it's a lot we will get, uh so we still have, we still have something to say with uh paying for that that we can use for the community board. So uh we we might have to talk about what we want to do with the announced uh money that they have reserved for the hot market. On top of the reserves we have that the council has taken with that program. Uh we could have gathered this by, and then that's all the money that happens where it's a sentence from the lobby.
We should have a reason for that.
Uh we're going to be a grand amount of the access plan was the paying the normal course of all of those that they access on two to thirteen, and the counter that will be uh they have a training, we're going to have more uh since that's related to uh here there, we will play. As I mentioned, according to the property, there are also, it's provided at the beginning of the whole way. Which is why I'm going to be there, so being able to arrange uh probably like you, I don't care.
Uh also giving kind of a secure uh first uh product rates and our staff to do this, I think that's like a case in the end or a peak demand uh program, uh these are the cities uh in a specific way for uh whenever they maybe have uh peak demand in their areas uh and if we reach the consumption of electricity in case uh in the end program, we will give it uh possible some some discount. Uh alcohol by using our uh this is a generator, so we're we're going on off on our uh operating uh they are all being planned for both of the, we would do that as well as operating the generator, but uh uh staff is looking into that every year, uh speaking of like that, which is, and it is a call off.
No, sir?
No, no.
Uh about ten minutes before this meeting started, I got word that the lines for the fountain is installed and will be working. Uh so if you want to drive by, it'll be game tonight and on our birthday. Uh I'm really excited, we're grateful for the fans, and Barbara Erickson, who donated uh money for the fountain, and I'm looking at a ribbon cutting and wanting to debate about what you guys know.
Joe? Uh and Jill, would like to welcome you back uh to Main Street, so we're glad to have you back. And as we kind of go around at the end of the council meetings, if you have anything that you'd like to bring forward briefly, we'll try to uh recognize you and give you a minute or two to to talk about that, but uh welcome officially from from the city.
Thank you, glad to be here.
And Suzanne, anything in the chamber? Nothing, great.
I'm really looking forward to seeing you all soon. I might be there real well as long as I have my best time. Uh we have a sufficient holy prayer for us.
Sounds like you already got that tape.
I'm good, thank you.
Uh we did, I did receive my uh Ingram's magazine and uh this year, forty under forty class. Yeah, last year I was uh lucky enough to be included in this class and uh Joe Sweeney, uh the editor, uh gave us a shout-out, I think he listed like five mayors uh that had been previously elected. Uh it's forty under forty and he gave us uh me and City Warrensburg a little shout-out, so just as a kind of. Uh we were included in Ingram's magazine. Anything else? Anyone else want to go to the gods?